That's why I call it first best.
How you doing young lady? Pretty good. We know how you're doing.
I don't think it sounds good.
No, then I can't date.
If they work for normal, this one here is a little challenging. You're almost broad, that broad definition, yes.
Okay, I said everybody kind of like get money, get out of there.
He thinks he's got some folks.
Well, who said that whether it's just for real, I said, I'll repeat it.
Do you want to wait for Mike?
No, let's give you said our ways coming to something, so we can't let him know the exact way, so.
I've handed that documentation to the council members with reference to the two departments that we're going to state it in. First one will be the quarters. And so Cindy, come on, what you got for us?
Well, I have four different areas that I would need extra money. I could either get this money now, or if we want to wait it out, I'll probably be asking for it at the end of the year next year. So the first one is our involves our pathologist fees. At the end of last year or in January of this year, he raised his monthly fee. What what that is, is we pay him a flat fee of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That covers if he does twenty autopsies or one autopsy. Our autopsies so far this year has averaged eleven a month. And that breaks down to about a little over two thousand dollars an autopsy.
What's his year, when's his yearly contract run from one to one?
We do not have a contract with them. I did have a MOU with him, but it seemed to cause problems with the council. It was a little confusing, so we dissolved that.
Get in contact for a year, so we have. Continuous, so we know what we're going to face him for the whole year.
Me, I I could discuss that with him. He really doesn't want to do a contract.
When was the last time he increased it?
Uh, January of this year. It's actually, it's actually varied between, what was it before? Twenty, twenty thousand five hundred to twenty-two five hundred. So say.
That a month?
That's a month. Say, uh, the rest of the months, we kind of decrease in our autopsy volume. He's very negotiable, so he, so he could drop it. As much as he could increase it because he's a private. He's got a private practice, so he's contracted with a hospital.
And you're saying he's doing eleven a month?
We're averaging eleven right now.
I thought that it was. A while back, it was like six.
Um, we averaged six. Uh, towards the end of last year, we were averaging eight. And this year we're averaging eleven.
I would say it's many years ago that are average.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is he looking at every death? I mean, is there anything that, you know, if it's obvious, I'm not even. Ninety-two years old and died in their sleep, you have to have an autopsy?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, we, I decide when, or the deputy on call can decide that. Um, there's a lot of autopsies that do end up being from natural causes, only because when we go to the scene, we don't have any medical information to go on. Um, they haven't been to the doctor in six to ten years. And so. Then we'll do an autopsy on those and then it'll end up being, you know, they might have had a heart attack or pulmonary embolism, whatever.
Factor in this and apparently, you know, some of this, you know, an increase in it's not anymore. Right, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, I don't know that we can really prove that yet, but.
Can the family request an autopsy be done?
Um, yeah, if we decide no, and they want it, it's a fair. Yeah, any other questions on my? Pathologist part?
Or you think it's going to continue at eleven?
I, you know what? Unfortunately, this is a, this is a department that I, I don't know. I I just, there it's, there's so many variables in it because we don't know when we're going to have a death. Um, we're required by the, um, we have certain standards that we have to go by to order an autopsy. So, yeah, just the.
The only thing that kind of just, I mean, doesn't hurt me, I don't take a special piece of autopsy, but there's a, there's apparently a number in his head that he wants to get paid for autopsy. Whether I know he's giving us a flat fee for the month, but if he's doing, we jump up to fifteen, is he gonna, you know, apparently he's gonna increase. So it'd be nice just to be like, hey, you know what, twenty-five hundred for an autopsy. And then keep there for a year, so budget. I mean, I know we don't know.
We did pay for autopsy before and it's getting up there close to four thousand.
About four thousand for autopsy when they're paying for before. He, he was, his rate was about four thousand for autopsy. Before he went to the flat rate of twenty-three. But that's a lot less when you're talking about an autopsy is at twenty-two thousand.
He, he's trying to work with me, he really is trying to, you know, keep the cost down. It sounds like, uh, I wish I could make that much money, you know. But it sounds like a lot, but when you break it down, the autopsies are just a little over two thousand dollars right now.
One's a, one's a little bit difficult. There's no other bit, you know.
I, unfortunately, I, like I said before, I, we use the hospital now, which is a privately owned hospital. He's contracted with that hospital and I can't bring another pathologist in there. We would have to go outside the county.
And isn't that what we used to do?
Probably for forensics.
Pardon?
For forensic autopsies, I would transport to South Bend or Indianapolis or wherever pathologist was available for us. Um, but for regular autopsies, we had a group called pathology consultants that are part of the hospital. They get them in-house for regular, not a.
We don't do those anymore. You don't do regular ones anymore?
Pathologists, that group doesn't do the autopsy anymore. Well, they get.
Those all disappeared.
They're just, they, one went to court, they don't want to go to court in case, in case does. The only other thing that I see was added is the lease purchase for twenty thousand. Oh, for the van. I'm still trying to get a van.
Why will commission buy you a van?
They told me, I went to them, um, with I, with the line items, they said they don't have a line item to purchase something. And I had to do, go in front of, um, you guys at budget time.
So what does it take to put a vehicle line item? I'm surprised there's not one in CCD.
So with some moving around in CCD, this is something that can be taken care of, I'll CCD next year. This doesn't need to be taken care of, I'll explain.
We can take that out.
So we take that out.
Okay, we can, is that gonna be a lease or approach?
It'll still be a.
No, you're gonna need a bit, I was with you last year and I crawled under that van, I said, we can get another year out of it, and somebody's been here for the.
Yeah, we have the plan, the CCD budget.
Oh, okay. And I don't, with the twenty thousand dollars, how I came up with that amount was, um, earlier when I was trying to get the van, it was fifteen thousand. And I just raised, um, all the prices by ten percent. Because I had already contacted these vendors for, um, quotes and the quotes only last of around thirty days. So there was no way to get a quote and have it last through budget time. So I didn't want to, um, personally, I didn't want to bother them for like the fifth time getting a quote unless I knew that something was positive. So.
How old is the baby, you have no?
Yeah, two thousand seven, seventeen years, yeah.
So is it, why are we leasing instead of buying?
It's a better deal.
If we're gonna keep something this long, um, I'm not gonna say the next one will be that long, but.
For other ones in twenty twelve.
Buy it outright, if it's worth it, I can see leasing cars we're gonna turn over every, with a bunch of miles on it, so I'm just, it's just a question, I wasn't sure.
Primarily with a guideline that Scott had started working with, but due to the fact that it is a specialty, well, it might be enough.
It might be, um. Yeah, that, I I just know that she put together both pricing, you know, for a loud purchase, so an outfit and everything, and then a leasing option as well, so we can obviously look at both of those.
I guess the question would be, would there be enough to buy, you know, how a CCD to buy a product?
The new monies that we have in there for CCD next year are like two hundred and thirty thousand. If I remember correctly, that new vehicle would be what, just about a hundred? Outfit, outfit and everything.
About seventy-two hundred.
Number in there, so, I mean, we could, it was, I mean, those are things that obviously we just need to talk about is there's enough in a budget to do either or. The question becomes, you wanna, you know, the leasing option then gives the fund more availability for more.
To do other things.
Please, you know, and so it just becomes that question of, you know, do you want to use up two thirty, forty percent of the fund to buy it outright or? So, and again, that does not include sheriff's motor vehicles. Sheriff's motor vehicles has their own line item with their own budget. This is for all other departments. So I've split them up, so that way the sheriff knows what his is, which has been historically a quarter million dollars and I collected at that. And now we have a new two hundred and thirty thousand in motor vehicles to spend on all other county, um, departments.
And this, and this leasing, um, option that, um, I was working out with enterprises of equity leasing. So at the time that they would contact and say, okay, your, your van is worth, it's at its prime right now. So you're gonna get this much money back. And then we want your van and then they'll give us another one. And then we could get money.
Looks like a higher grade than value.
Yeah.
But due to the fact that it has to be special outfit, how does that work out? Isn't there like a seventeen month by time you order it? And by time you get it, it's like twelve months per period or something?
So, yeah. But they, I checked with them and they, I, cause I said, you know, the van is, you know what this van's being used for and they're like, not a problem.
So it's just matter of now, just whatever. We have the options, no, we're, does she have to go now, does she have to go in front of, we have money, does she have to go in front of commissioner to get it, or in front of lots for this?
So, and so next year it would already be appropriated in the budget, so she would need to get the permission from the commissioners at that.
She has to go for the commissioners and say that it's been the money's there in CCD. It's just matter of now, we'll be supplying credits.
So then I need, so then I need to get the two, um, the buyout quote and then the lease quote, right?
Yep. Now, I, I would still hope that the commissioners would work with you guys to decide what is truly best, now again, I don't know what Scott's options are, you know, procedures are going forward, but it's, again, I, I would hope that they would at least talk to you because, again, that significantly determines that fund, you know, or at least that line item, say.
I can appreciate what Mike's saying, though, that they that this van has lasted so long now and.
There is a way to buy it out too. They'll give you the value, then you just find the balance of it.
He was, Scott, when I met with him, um, he would just push in the lease. End of it. Because then it'll just keep rolling and then, you know, we won't have another seventeen year old van that for coming in front of the council to get replaced, it's just gonna be replaced each for five years, I think.
Yeah, at least as long as it says that, I mean, again, I guess, just in the lease, it would need to say, are they just replacing the vehicle? And then it's still on the county to outfit it or?
They include when, um, I, when I get the quote and for the, for the payment each month, it includes, um, Cartronics to outfit the vehicle. And then it includes the, uh, hot deck that we have to put in the back of it. So enterprise would contact those two vendors, get everything together.
So it showed up.
Get it outfitted and then it's, when we get the vehicle, then everything's included in that monthly payment. Each time, and when it's time to turn that vehicle in, they would have another one outfitted for us before. So we would never be with. It would give us enough time to.
True.
Trade it in and. But, but, I mean, I, that's up to the council, however you want them.
Well, it has to do with the commissioners also. And we'll talk to Scott about it and we'll make sure that they realize that those were the numbers that we included in the CCD, your vehicle.
Yep.
So then we're, we're.
Um, the other was, um, for our, um, hospital fees. We have to pay the hospital two hundred and twenty-five dollars each for each autopsy that's performed there. And we are short now, so I was just going by what, like I said, this department is all based on statistics, I can't, nothing's concrete. So I was asking for, um, an additional ten thousand dollars in that.
That's thirty-nine ninety, which is out of the services.
Yeah, we split, um, I think it was last year or the year before, I slid, that used to be included all in the, um, consultant fee, which was very confusing. So I split those apart, so the pathologist is separate and the hospital fee, those include any lab, um, labs that we need done, um, over and above our autopsy that we need to do to determine the cause of death. And then the, the last one was the additional for, um, the hourly that was, um, approved at the June twenty-fifth. To get through. Year. And that, if, if I did this right, that is over, because right now it was like a hundred and four, what do we have, a hundred and four? That was one thousand two fifty-eight. So then the forty-seven, two fifty-four would be added to that amount.
Yep.
And if I didn't do that right, please correct me.
Good.
Okay.
So you've got an increase of seventy-five thousand, now if we take out that, um, eighty thousand. Which would be ten thousand for the other services, the increase in hourly, as well as the increase in consultants.
Yeah, um, I do have a question that, um, and I do appreciate, um, the hourly being half, I do. But I, I, I guess I wasn't like really prepared for you guys to pass that. So one of my questions is if when, when our, um, some of our deputies are required to go to a coroner conference once a year to get their CE hours? And I would have to reimburse them for taking off of their work.
You mean pay them?
Yeah. Why, how do I?
Besides paying for the conference, you want us to pay them?
The conference is paid by the state coroner association. We reimburse for meals and by works to come.
Yeah.
Okay. And then another thing is.
Oh, then finish it. Do you want us to pay for them, pay off work, whatever they pay, is there, is? How is it done for other?
It's gonna give us an hour day, okay? Not all travel, it depends on where it's located, okay?
Yeah.
The meals, you have an amount that you are allowed to use a day. You cannot carry over from one day to the next. If they are provided by training, then you don't get that amount. So it all depends on where, what you're doing, you have to give us a little more detail, if I can give you a specific. But you get paid for your seven hour day. Now, the question is, are you going to training? You know, across the United States, are you going to training in Indianapolis, are you going to training around here? So those are differences. Okay, so you've got, you've got two and a half, you know, travel. Are you gonna spend, spend the night before, are you going to?
Pay, they.
They cover all that, so it's just travel, so you get your mileage and then you get your meals, yeah.
I just had, right, I just, yeah, I just had some deputies ask me, you know, because if they have to take up, say they have to take off work, do they get compensated somehow otherwise? I don't know how this works with.
What's happening before it's decided, it's probably.
We unfortunately didn't address. They, they were just salary, so, but now that they're hourly, I didn't know if this was something that.
There we could pay an hourly, right?
Need to change.
I was just.
What's your question?
How they get paid, now they're an hourly employee or not a salary employee, prior to they were salary. So for the training, they would just pay the hourly rate.
So they'd be CE, yeah.
And it's something.
So do we?
Like a day off, it's required training, right, it's mandatory training.
We have to have sixteen hours every.
Yeah, they don't have to take a day off. That's part of their workday, right?
Well, no, because they're on shifts, they're on twelve hour shifts, maybe only work two shifts per week or so many per month, they don't work every day. That's the difference, now Doris works every day, but the other individuals do not. They only work so many shifts a month.
I just didn't know how that worked.
Well, give us an example and then I'll get you the, the total information. Just send me the information and then I'll give you all the information of what they have daily for meals and mileage, what they get.
Yeah, they give the, the meals and the, the, the mileage.
Right.
But I'm just saying, if they work another, because all of my deputies work another job. So if they have to take off time on their other job to have to go to this conference, am, are, are we obligated as a department to have to pay their other wages?
No.
Pay them so hard, work related, are they getting paid to go to this, to get their CE out?
Yes, if they were paid before under salary, they'd be getting an hourly rate.
So do I need to increase the hourly amount so that can be covered along with, say, one of the deputies gets a call at four forty-five, because most of the calls will last about three hours. So if they work over, pay them to be working over.
I think what I would do right now is to see how it goes. I don't think I'd get my mind too busy to figure out every scenario in the future, I think what we would do is handle it as it comes up and address accordingly.
Okay.
I don't understand how, I mean, they're on salary and they were going to this training also, so how, how is that working?
They have a different job that they're salaried at.
I understand, but how, so then, then you had two people that were on salary and they went down to Indianapolis for the training?
So they tried, at, at some point in the years, we would decrease the amount that they were on call. So they were, we tried to get like six or seven shifts per month. And if they were going to the, there, then they would decrease to maybe three or four, so that would be their shift that would be covered there, it always worked very well. But we tried.
Essentially work the same way, I mean, it's okay when they're down there, if they're, if they're gifts, you know, if you space it out properly to cover, you know.
Possibly, yeah. But I don't, we don't, they get paid when they're on call.
They'll get paid when they're training.
So they, they would.
Instead of having maybe a, they're on calls for the month, they got training, they're gonna get paid to be.
Yeah, that makes sense, I was just asking, because I wasn't quite sure how.
They shouldn't be required to go down.
People think that they shouldn't be required to go down there without being paid.
Yeah, I mean, I shouldn't wait till, yeah.
Well, Mike just. Okay, I think we're gonna move on to nine-one-one then. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be. You, right? Well, um, fortunately, I've been able to talk to everyone here, um, except you guys, but I'm sure Karen filled you in. Um, so, good news. I did have, I did have a slight change, so I'll give you the numbers. But with my first proposal, I'm reducing the forty-nine twenty-two by sixty-eight thousand dollars and the twelve twenty-two total reduction to sixty-one, six seventy-four. Now, in salaries, removing six positions is a total of three hundred seven thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars. I am proposing that one hundred eighty thousand dollars of that, well, my initial proposal, so I'm sorry, my addendum, one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars of that be put back into wages top-down, five thousand dollars, except for the assistant. Because we had, if we remember, last year we were concerned about the disparity, which, um, I'm sure everyone still is concerned. So his physician would get a twelve thousand dollar raise, bringing him to eighty thousand, six hundred seventy-five. Everyone else, five thousand dollars. That is still, even with that change, it is a, an, a net gain into the surcharge, the twelve twenty-two of one hundred twenty thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars. Now, after meeting with several of you, there were some concerns about removing six. Now, after meeting with several of you, there were some concerns about removing six positions. And I had heard that possibly removing four, so I wrote these numbers up for you as well. Um, they're not in any of the fourteen forty fours that I submitted. But if we, instead of removing six, we remove four, that would still be a net gain to the twelve twenty two of twenty five thousand, one hundred thirty four. And that is including all of the wage increases that I proposed.
Why would there be concern?
Just with, I think the concern was, um, you know, we'd, we'd rather, if we get into a position where we see that. We need those positions back, better to have them in the budget as opposed to coming before you then and asking for them. Um, I think that was the, if I'm not mistaken, that was the concern.
What's your, what's your thought process on?
Um.
You put this together, you remember?
Yes.
You can give the low down six?
If, well, we can historically be functional without them. And here, here's where it gets interesting.
See who had the expertise better than you to decide that.
Well, if you wanna know the expertise, there's a tool through NINA, which is a nine one one, you probably remember NINA, it's an organization like iPhone. It's a very detailed, arduous tool where you plug in lots of numbers, lots of variables, and it tells you your ideal staff. So once I did that, um, it actually said that of, of thirty six dispatchers, we were six short. Now. I have done that tool before. Actually, I spoke with John Joe Canis, who was a previous director, just talked to him yesterday at a conference I went to down in Indy. And he, he's of the mindset that I am, that, that, that NINA tool kind of has numbers, which I understand. I mean, believe me, if I could have. Every single position filled.
Kind of like FBI's stats on police.
Right. If I could have every single position filled twenty four seven, believe me, I would. But I know that there's obviously fiscal concerns, so. Um, I've looked at the past, Amber helped me pull numbers from where we've been over the past, actually, seven years, I think we pulled data. Um, we have never had we been more than thirty positions full. And by that thirty, I mean completely released, functioning solely on their own dispatchers. Without anyone in training, right? So if we get thirty, that gives us staffing eight on each way of four shifts. That would give us eight on our day shifts and seven on each of our night shifts, which would allow us to drop down one and still be. Above where we are with our minimums now. So. In this proposal, my thought is this, and as I shared with you. I would like to. This wage increase is really a retention effort on my part because I think that, um. I know we're looking at our wage study, which as we know is dated, but we're also looking at neighboring counties. Um, I found out another stat yesterday where Hancock County, just, just for a little context. Hancock, Hancock County has half of the population we do and about half the population we do. And they're going to be making, their dispatchers are at fifty eight thousand. So it's a significant difference. Now Hancock is right next to Marion. There may be a cost of living difference, so that does factor in.
What are ours?
Uh, ours right now are fifty one. This would bring them up to fifty six.
You said from the top down, is that included upper administration?
Yes. Yeah.
How does that have to do with retention?
Um.
You're looking to retain and hire, are we looking at the?
Certainly, but I.
I'm not, no offense, I'm not saying that you're not worth it, but I'm just saying. If we're looking to look at, you said retention and hiring and the people that Hancock County, that puts a fifty seven, I didn't know where, where's the upper administration?
Well, are you interested in retaining me? I mean, no tongue in cheek here.
You have to talk to the commissioners on.
Yeah, I, I hope so. I hope, I hope you're satisfied with my, with my.
I guess I'm just asking a question. When you said top down, I wanna make sure it's not like supervisor.
No, it's not that. It's, it's me down. And the only one would be larger than that, of course, is the assistant director. So I think that these are. Um, the numbers specifically for first class telecommuniers, which to your point, Mike, you're correct, um. We wanna retain those. Those are a revolving door. And. I think that the idea of comparing where we are with, um, Lepore County and Lake County. Is inaccurate because that's the problem that we've faced and that's the problem we continue to face. Dispatchers making lateral moves. And. This five thousand dollars difference, right now we're about lateral with Lepore County. An extra five thousand dollars, I think is a persuasive amount for someone to consider before they want to. Jump slip. Um. You may, I'll, I'll get ahead of all of you here or some of you that may have thought, well, why are they leaving? Um, I can confirm that this is not something that is, uh, this is, this is epidemic nationwide. Dispatch centers are short staffed, people jump hot from here and there. Uh, there's always green or grass and then they get to. The grass and they realize it's really not. So this is something that I think, one. Will, um, discourage them from leaving or at least give them pause. Two, will. Be intriguing to some of the best talent. Um, I've given you a lot of examples with Justin Verlander, you know, he didn't leave the Tigers. For a better workout facility. He left the Tigers for twenty seven million dollars. So money does play into this. I'd like to get the best talent and I'd like to retain the best talent. And so I think this is, I can't guarantee this is going to work. I'm not going to lie, speculative on my part, but I think that this is. Something we should try and see if it works. And if I. I in no way want to jeopardize the county by removing physicians. And based on our statistics, I don't think, I know for a fact this would not, our call volume and our historic staffing issue. This would not jeopardize any of the responders or citizens.
What if we had some hypothetical situation incorporated or an issue at some point? Would be nice to have those two positions available, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, that's kind of why when we were talking.
Right.
That's how we kind of, when you said who asked that, that, that's. What we were kind of thinking that they come over, we might need, you know, a couple of positions though.
I would have to logistically, I'll share with this group, I would not want to add an additional PD position. I think that we can, um. Probably restructure our current three frequencies that, you know, you're familiar with our three, three frequencies. We have. Portage, which also dispatches for Burns Harbor and Iqalhua Jones. We have the sheriff's department, which dispatches, dispatches for. Sheriff's Department, Couts, Hebrun and Beverly Shores. And then we have Alpo PD, which is its own autonomous frequency. So I would, I'd wanna restructure that some, but I really think that we can incorporate those two police departments. Now. This is a little bit interesting and I guess I'm getting in the weeds here. Radio traffic from, from, from those agencies is considerably more than the rest. So I think that that's kind of been, I think they've grown comfortable with the method in which they obviously, um. Do their jobs up there.
That would be a training.
It would be a training thing, yeah. But I think that, I think that with a little bit of tweaking here and there and cooperation. We could incorporate them into current, you know, um. Talk groups we have.
So you're still, even with that hypothetical, not saying, you know, if that whatever happens someday, you're, you're comfortable with. Uh, eliminate the six.
I am because if we, if we don't add, add any frequencies or, or talk groups, um.
You have to have an actual, actual bodies.
That's right.
What, didn't you, at one point, I remember talking, is your nine one one fee going up in twenty twenty five?
That's the rumor, but there's, that's conjecture at this point. There's nothing been established in stone. Maggie spoke to somebody yesterday down in Indy and again. I think it's everybody's push. Obviously, the directors are all, hey, when's this happening? So.
What, what was it, like quarter or fifty cents or?
Um, well, we had, I had her fifty cents, but again, I don't know. Fifty cents would be considerable.
Sure.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. Number one is the job description with reference to the assistant director and point the vehicle. And it was understood and I had mentioned to you that the county attorney specifically stated that if you're increasing the salary. It would either be the car or the salary. And so you said you were gonna talk to, you know, Andrew about it? I did, and I think it's, it's more specific to, although I did have a conversation with him, um, as we all know. This, that, that salary is for the physician itself, not for an individual. Um, I, he is definitely, um. Would prefer the, the wage increase as opposed to the vehicle. So, and I do think that having one vehicle, um, would suffice. We can certainly share that vehicle if needed. Um, yesterday I drove down with Rich and Andrew and I went to the conference, so. I think it's doable with one vehicle and, you know, if anybody needs to use that vehicle, it could be shared by the department. The other thing I wanted to call the attention was you've got three different areas that are taking out of overtime. The first one is stipends, the second one is regular overtime, and you've got overtime plus. Your stipends this year so far to the end of June are thirty six thousand, eight hundred and sixty. Your overtime is thirty eight thousand, two seventy six, thirty six. And then your overtime plus is sixty nine thousand, six oh four, ten. The total so far out of your overtime is one forty four, seven forty, forty six. You only have a hundred and seventy five appropriated overtime, which leads to thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty per ounce per year. How do you?
Well, I'm going to, that's a good question, Karen, and I'm going to have to move money from my, from my salaries, which I have an abundance of. Um, to cover that. But if we, if we can get these physicians trained and released, then. It will substantially cut down on our overtime. And if the council remembers, last year when the stipends were approved. It was with the caveat that this would be temporary until we can get those physicians filled. So, um. What I ultimately like to do is I would like to have two permanent CTOs. And then we would have, we, we've already implemented a pool of applicants, if you will. That we have, when we have numbers that we need, we pull from that pool and we let the others know, hey. We know we're not asking them obviously to hang on. People have lives if they find something else, they do. But if they meet our criteria with our protocol, then they'll be in a, in a pool that we can pull from and not have to go through the arduous process of hiring. Um, the, the, the testing that we have a fire with hiring, things like that. So that's established. If we can get our thirty in there and then we have the people that come and go as they will. Two positions would, um, allow us to move those trainees in those two positions without having to. Our training program, let me give you a little background. Our training program right now is structured so that we have a, a month academy. And in that month academy, they work essentially in admins hours, uh, one additional hour. Christina always gets comp hours for that because we wanna keep them on the eighty hour schedule the floor has. Um. And then they move into their actual floor training. So to maximize our, we don't wanna have one person in academy and then. Back to back academies, you know, that's just not efficient. So we try to get four, three to four in an academy at a time. This way, we would eliminate the academy, we would have the two CEO, CTO positions and we would just cycle them in as they, as they come. Or hopefully they would make it through the training and our CTOs would then act as an additional person on the floor. And if not, we rotate another person from our pool into that equation. Now, we're not there yet because of our numbers. But that is the most efficient method. Doing that, we would eliminate all the CTO positions or a considerable amount of CTO positions and then the stipend would go away.
And how far, and I know you have to sort of plan on. How many you can get trained and how many stay in position and all of that. But if you had a best case scenario. Because you're, you know, you're looking at a substantial amount you're safe because eventually. You're going to have to start covering your health costs and things of that sort. And as of right now, a couple of years, you may not have what you have now unless they do the increase. So what would your best case scenario be to reduce the stipend? Because I know right now there was some question about individuals that are getting stipend but not working the full week. And in all likelihood, it should be prorated then. So, um, that.
And you, um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not understanding this point.
Well, they're getting the two, two hundred fifty dollar stipend for the paid period, okay? But they are either taking time off during that week. Uh, or they're. Sick or whatever. And if they're not there, how can they be earning that stipend?
How many they be questioning if they're taking?
Right, yeah. So that was a big question that should really probably be prorated. Not that it would help you or hurt you. But those are things that need to be, if you're giving them the stipend for training and they're not there, it doesn't make, you know what I'm saying?
I understand, yeah. Yeah, um. Dollars and cents of that would get incredibly difficult to maintain. But I mean, if, if, you know, if the auditor superintendent would help us with that and you, if you think it'd be better. Obviously, it's gonna be financially more responsible to go that route. Um, we would just have to keep a really close eye on. On those, you know, that's, that's, uh, that those are variables that are plugged in from difficult to.
Well, I think when you submit your, your time cards and you have that time off and that person's allocated, you have to fill out. The stipend and things of that sort. That would probably be with a red flag saying, hey, we need to look and those may be adjusted accordingly.
Okay, yeah, that ought to be my only thing, all, you know.
Percentages and prorates.
Yeah, I think it would just be a matter of getting the habit of it.
What drives mostly overtime?
Shortages. Our shortages. We've got, on days, we have a minimum of six, that drops us down to five with breaks. Um, and on nights, we have a minimum of five, which drops us down to four. So the position we're in now, we actively, um. We, we've just released a couple, so we're not going without breaks as much as we were. But we were working several months there where it was, people were going without breaks or, um. Or people from admin were going, yeah, admin was going in to cover those lunch breaks.
Whatever.
Absolutely, yeah. That causes burnout. So it's really cyclical, you know, we know it is. It's, it's burnout and it's, there's a lot of things that contribute.
Which, you know, we talked about it, having the thirty two for whatever reason. You know, if there's a turnover like you talked about, twenty some percent, it's like. Somehow those thirty two would be a benefit. They always have maybe two extra training. I mean, if the overtime's that high because of shortages. They get into the thirty two for whatever reason would be beneficial for maybe the overtime too. Whether it's two people from border or trash return or just two extra people that are always in the hopper. You know, I don't know, could those, did you train two people and they work part time? Did that always, I know you've got part time.
Yeah, it's difficult to, I mean, we would have to, when you, when they're, when a person's in training, we, we essentially have two people working one position. Because we have the CTO, the trainer tethered to the newbie, right? And so, um. That's where, I mean, we're, we're, we're just spending a considerable, I think, an exorbitant amount of money on. Hiring and training. I put in my proposal and, um, actually several of you confirmed some of my numbers. They were loose, they were rounded. But if you look at a hundred thousand dollars a year for employees. At thirty six, that's three point six million. Our attrition rate now is twenty two percent, about eighty year. Um, that equals seven hundred ninety two thousand dollars that we are paying yearly to hire and train these. So. I say, let's, let's try to, let's, let's keep them. Let's do what we can to keep them. Um. Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of where we're stuck here.
But do you see that they are staying though?
Yeah, you know what? That's a good question. And culture is an interesting thing. Um. The assistant director just attended a conference in Orlando in which he came back with some really valuable information. And. One of the things that stuck in my head was, um, there's a, there's a really famous within the dispatch circle, uh. Man named Adam Chin. And he is, um, he's got a title, the wellness, the wellness dispatcher, well, did something. Anyway, he, he gives, um, his lectures on. Dispatching and, and how it affects people, um, these things, uh. The retention of, and, and just this, this is, like I said, it was epidemic nationwide. And one of the things he said was that culture takes eighteen to twenty four months to really see the effects of change. I've been in this position now since May of twenty two. And everybody here knows that there's been some bumpy ground that I've navigated. But I can honestly say, and I hope that from your end as well, things have quieted down. And. I'm seeing that on our end too. I'm seeing, I'm seeing the, the center, the culture of the center, the sentiment of the center, the attitude of the center. Improving. I'm really seeing it. Um, and, and it's not just me, you know, I've had conversations with supervisors too. I've had a conversation. Many of you may know Sandra Gallego. She's been, uh, with the county over twenty years now. And valuable supervisor. And I talked to her about it and she goes, you know, I'm, I'm seeing it change too. And valuable supervisor. And I talked to her about it, and she goes, you know, I'm, I'm seeing it change too. So this isn't just, um, you know, lip service. I think it's real. So. If we continue down the trajectory we're, we're on. I'm hopeful that, you know, we won't encounter these, these problems of people just, you know, bailing. Um, but it, but an interesting fact too is, I find that like when one person, it's never just like one person, a straggler leaves here and there. I'm finding that like in groups, so. Again, I can't, I couldn't say for sure, but I hope it doesn't happen.
You know, I can appreciate, um, the job they're doing because, uh, with my background. I worked in intense corner here. And when, when somebody calls nine one one, you've got an emergency. And there's burnout. There's, you know, it's taken so many years of that. And, uh, you know, I could see where they need to rest. And I can appreciate what, what this nursing has to provide too. But, um, it's something that we've been fighting. Um, it seems like on the council for many years. And it's good to hear you say that's getting there. It's really.
Thank you.
So you're arguing against your earlier point, um, or that you're just taking it for the money? And you know, money and everything, it's, it's culture, right? It is, it's environment, so.
Right.
Well, one of the, I mean, there's even leaving the one seventy-five in there as a contingency. Again, if it goes right, that number should theoretically go down. If it turns out to be an actual shortage. Then you have a hundred and seventy, you get three people out of that. So. I mean, if we go to the fifty-six thousand realistically, so it can almost be a contingency on if we really do have a shortage and we need more people.
It's there.
Take the overtime and move to the salaries and hire.
Problem is, during that training period, you're still. Maybe it's not like you can take a full amount and move it over and.
No, it's, it's not, uh, this.
I mean, it's an option.
It's an option. So.
But where, where would her savings go?
Well, she has her own fund. It's surcharge fund. Yeah, so it's right, okay.
So, yeah.
It's not like it goes anyplace else. It goes right to state right in the budget and her mind. The only thing that I would request is if the council decides to, that you have this job description changed to remove the vehicle. Stimulation in it, so that they're prepared to make that decision.
Well, that's not too all sorts of, I don't want to talk about it really, but Mark's fact of. We don't create vehicle policy in this county, and I don't know. Missures haven't talked to me about it being a wonder or the other. We decide to give the money to me. It's not attached to a vehicle that's between the search and.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the harder question about when you talk about the five thousand dollars and everything you say is. Um, where is your salary? I, I wouldn't know a director's salary compared to other directors our size. In the area.
Um, well.
Yeah, I'm saying you're not worth it, I keep saying that. But just as we're looking at. You know, I think that your goal is to hire people and keep the people we hire to save on that, people bailing. And, uh, I mean. I'm just kind of curious, you know, you can see with a deputy, that's the one that would get the major increase. With, and then trading coordinator.
My, my salary is, well, as expected, my salary is considerably lower than Lake County and it's considerably higher than La Porte County. But, you know, I, I don't want to pour words in La Porte County's mouth, but I know they're fighting for a wage increase over there. Um. Statewide, um, Hendricks County is probably the closest to us in population and call volume. And I'm considerably lower than that director position. Um, I'm about lateral with Hancock County. Their population is half of ours. And so I think that, um, throughout the state of Indiana, I don't think that, um. The salary for this position is, you know, and by any means outlandish. I don't.
I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that our goal is to look at, I mean, you have this opportunity because of. Of the, uh, kind of budget we have, our departments don't have the same, um, all the same type of opportunity. And then I, I made you from digging in the weeds here and creating a way to keep your people. Compensate your people because you're right, training is a huge investment and I'm spending a lot of money on people that, you know, that aren't staying, so. Whatever we can do, um, and I'm not saying that this, you know, your proposal could not pass, I'm just. You know, kind of putting it out there, but, um, uh, I don't know what other department heads. Are going to be looking at that type of an increase. I mean, anyway, I'm just kind of putting that out there. I don't know how. How my colleagues feel a lot at this point, but, um, trying to get our arms around it. But I do see the, uh, and it makes good sense, the point of what you're trying to do with your. Dispatch workers that are, if you're, uh, looking to compensate with the department head. That's good.
Thank you.
Do you have a little more of the foundation budget?
Yes. Uh, the foundation budget, I was able to, um. Uh, no change in uniforms, other supplies, training, education, that was, that was moved out. That's in our, uh, we know that's in the twelve twenty-two. The telephone or internet service line item, I did decrease by sixty-six thousand dollars. I moved. I did a deep dive into what was eligible based on the surcharge, um, eligible expense guidelines. And so I. Did have to keep some money in there, some of the line items that we paid for that are not eligible, eligible expenses. But, um, only nine thousand dollars actually from that line item. The rest has been in the surcharge. Um, maintenance agreements, that is staying, um, for obvious reasons. We, we've got a lot of maintenance agreements that fall within that category, right? Dues and subscriptions, I, I decreased that by five, only five hundred dollars. The reason that I, um, I have one line item that Ryan actually helped me, uh. Move a cost that should have been probably housed there in the first place. And I kept it, I think it's around nineteen hundred, so I kept that at, um. Uh, or no, I decreased that by two thousand dollars. I'm trying to remember, what did they move that to brand to? I moved it. I, I kept it at five hundred dollars, and that was based on just a cost that came out of there in the five hundred dollar range. Contractual services, I kept that no change, um, because this year we have a three-year contract. That is up for renewal with our chairs. Um, that was one of the things that when I first got the position, I kind of, um. Researched and it was experimental to see if this chair line item. Could, um, we can lease them instead of buy them outright, and it has been phenomenal. Our chairs, we don't have complaints about the chairs. Um, the company they're releasing from, when they find a problem with their chairs, they're in fixing those chairs within a week. Or sending a replacement delivered to us. And that's gonna come out of the contractual services. And then other equipment, there was nothing because I got the, um, the only thing I had, the amount of air was fire station alerting. I have nothing to.
Twelve-hour shifts, are they helping the forward time or all? Other nine will watch over who falls.
Yeah, a lot of them, some of them aren't. So people that move from a twelve-hour shift to hours, love it. Everybody that I, I'll share with you, I was part of the center when we went from eight hours to twelve hours. And I was reluctant, I thought, oh, no way. I mean, I can't be here for another four hours every day because we had mandated overtime in which if somebody called off. Either low man or somebody who volunteered would have to be stuck over that four hours. And it just seemed eternal. Um, but there's something mentally different about knowing you gotta be there for twelve hours. And then also on the flip side, you get a lot more days off. So it's, it is nice. And what I found with the OT with twelve hours is. Our, our on-call, I, I, I don't know if I want to get in the weeds here, but our on-call has worked out very efficiently. We have our supervisors create an on-call schedule monthly, and it's on a volunteer basis. So, um, all the dispatchers supply their availability for the month. And then, um, the supervisor goes in and plugs those individuals in their off days in case we are, in case a call off or something would drop. Our numbers below minimum. Where it's been really good is we don't have any mandated overtime when you're in the chair. So if you work twelve hours and you, and there's a night call off, you're working days, and there's a, there's an evening call off. Those people that work days are not mandated because we have this on-call person who's responsible. Where else this works is the crews are, they work, I mean, they, they really have a system. And crews will work out amongst themselves. And if somebody's got an on-call and something comes up and they're like, hey, you know what? Something came up, I'm gonna have to work tomorrow. They'll reach out to their crew and they'll say, hey. I can work the first half, but something came up with my kid at school. Can somebody take the second half? We've had crews say, yeah, I can take three hours and somebody else, I can, I mean, who can't work three hours on an off day, you know? So they really divvy up that time in a way that benefits not only the on-call person, but the, the, the crew needing that coverage. And, I mean, you know, who can complain about extra money in your pocket if all you gotta do is something for four hours, right? Extra on a day off. So our on-call has worked out, again, that one worked extremely well. So we, you know, I, I think twelve hours, back to your, uh, question, Mike. Um, I think to go back to an eight-hour schedule now, it'd be pointy. I, I think we would have a lot of people who were unhappy with going forward.
There would be a lot of people that would jump shake.
Yeah, yeah, I think. That's my, that's my view.
I don't know anybody in there that.
Yeah.
Even the new people are new.
Consolidation and all things for, having to not, uh, hire or. People who are kind of doing more with classes, having to do it, it's additional consolidation. Are we consolidated or are we just? Are we kind of just, uh, on the same building? What would you? We, uh, like, sharing frequencies, are we doing that enough? Are there internal things that are helping with?
So we can.
Manpower and, um, you know, mold that, you know, and or a uniform way of. Different agencies doing things similar or the same where there isn't this, uh. Discrepancy on, you know, somebody working one council one day and, and a certain agency wants. A call done this way, and then the same call comes in the next day on a different council, and the different agency wants. You're right.
Yeah.
How's that going?
Um, I think it's going well. I guess I'll, I'll answer that in two, two ways. So. When we flip over and we're, we implement fire station alerting. We are combining two, two frequencies. We're combining portage and volatile fire frequencies. Um, and all of, um, so everyone knows, there, there are so many, sometimes I get frustrated because I think it's a lot of bureaucratic rent tape. But really, it's just a lot of information to stay on top of and share amongst all of the entities. So we have a nine-one-one advisory board. We have a, we have two tech committees. We have a fire and a PD tech committee. Those tech committees. Really are our subsidiary committees of our, um, the nine-one-one advisory board. We have PCFA. Uh, Fort Kind Fire Association, that's another entity which, you know, as I say. Um, we have a radio committee that was just started this year primarily because of the fire station alerting that's gonna be coming in. And the changes that we're gonna have to do with the radios and reprogramming. So it's a lot of information that has to be shared. Um. But I think that what I've found, even though sometimes it seems like a headache, I feel as though information is. Being shared broadly, more than it has been, so there aren't people in the dark. And in addition to that, these committees really are understanding that the need for consistency. And what I'm finding is, um, you know. There are, there are those out there that kind of, um, dig in and they don't want the change, but, um. There are, there are the others that I really found very supportive of some of the changes that have been made. So. Again, that's another thing that I think as we move forward, as we continue to. Keep everyone aware, and I think with the fire and tech, uh, police tech committees, what we've done is we've also given a voice to the front line. Um, PD and fire and dispatchers to bring us concerns that maybe have been overlooked or. Brushed aside. Um, so I feel really good. I can only see it going, getting better as more people have. Uh, the means to contribute to the goals overall.
One more question, though. Well, as, as a nine-one-one director, have you, um, had any, anything come to mind? Have there been any, uh, concerns that, that, that you can, you know, that you can think of? I'm not putting you on the spot, having your county ambulance service. Have you heard of anything? Is there anything that you hear from your dispatch? Have there been any, uh, uh, you know. Anything that, that kind of stands out that maybe, uh, you know. How much do I not know about? Any yes?
Um, you know.
Cause you know our contract's something else.
Yeah.
Not to get too deep into that rabbit hole, just kind of anything in general that, um, or.
I mean, from the floor, I, I'm not seeing really a, uh, a lapse in service, um. I think what the floor is aware of, as, as is the admin, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, contention out there. There's. Uh, there's, there's bad guys, there's good guys, there's right ways, there's wrong ways, that are all, a lot of it's subjective. Um, I think that where dispatch is concerned, we can kind of remain, um.
Things are working in dispatch.
Yeah, they're working in dispatch, and we can kind of remain outside.
Our team service are getting, as far as, you know, getting where they need to be in a timely fashion. It just kind of stands by all your alliance.
Yeah.
I guess that's one way for you.
Yeah, I mean, we're, there's been questions like, what's gonna happen? Where's it gonna go about, I mean, how would I know? So we just, we just get the call, we dispatch the services we have, and we see where it lands.
Good.
Thanks. Um, it's fun, it's challenging. It's not, not fun all days, but. I'm enjoying it.
You know, just for review, what you brought up, Mike. Do we own the, the housing for the ambulances that allow in the county?
The Chasterton one we do, the Alpo one we do, and I don't know about the other one.
I thought, well, I thought we did. That's why.
I thought those were two. I think they're county buildings, aren't they?
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you all, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is nice.
Oh, it's all gonna happen again. Not the full. They'll be, I'll figure out that in fact. For some reason, I thought it was twenty-seven. But like, if you look at its locations, so like, where. Well, there's like, so like soil and water is technically its own location in our allow, but it's underneath stormwater or like highway garage. Typically, it's got its own location, but we will very often group it in with sheriff's department. So, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
The email that came out today, I mean, we're not.